...on your carries. Item four, staff and student recognition.
This is a big week for students across the district in STLP, but they actually have their regional competition this week. So these, this group of students that I've asked to come to the board meeting tonight are with St. Elementary, and they're doing a project on the new school. So I want to, I want them to tell you first of all how, how you guys came upon this project, why you chose this project, and what's behind it, and then we'll play your video. You can talk to the board.
I can talk to them.
We're down. There's a lot of people back there.
We chose this project because we both really wanted, we all really wanted to show how much pride and favor we wanted to take in going to the new school, and we wanted to help a lot of people like with moving there and how they feel.
So we made this video because we wanted to show people around the new school and what it looks like and like where everything is and like, and right, and like teach them right before they step inside.
We want to make everybody, every parent's comfortable before we move so they can get used to it.
Let the girls handle this. You'll see in the video, it was his choice how many scenes he was in.
Yeah.
So you'll see that in the video, but they had, you guys sent questions out to people first, right? And then they tried to answer those questions through this video. So we'll play it, and then I want them to just kind of tell the board what their favorite parts of the school are. So you guys sit down and watch yourselves on video here. Hopefully, I'm passing it out, so hopefully we're all over, just like it's supposed to.
Welcome to the SESSTLP podcasting crew. Welcome to our new school, come on in.
This is a security vestibule. When parents come in, you'll be buzzed in right here, and this is where you sign in at front office. You won't be able to get past these doors.
This is the dorm gym, let's go in.
Wait, you can't go in, it's under construction.
Come on.
Here's a quick peek. That's the rock wall. Oh, I like that.
These are the restrooms that are accessible from the gym and night hallway and return right of say. We even have a family changing restroom with a baby station. These doors lead to all the classrooms. These doors will remain locked all day and can only be opened by a teacher's card. So when you walk in on your right, this is the daycare area, and then again on your right is the preschool room. And then on your left is the two office areas. And then that's the guidance waiting room. This is our library, look how big it is. On our tree and on clouds, so beautiful. And behind these doors will be where all our bookstore store. Down this hall, we have kindergarten and first. Down that hall, we have fourth and fifth. Down that hall, we have second and third. Welcome to the green pod discovery zone. It will be flexible seating and spot where you can collaborate, communicate, and be critical thinker. In every pod, you'll have restrooms. And here we have the kindergarten classroom and first grade classroom. Look at all this storage. Right out beside the green pod, we have our art room. And out these doors, you can reach the playground. Welcome to the yellow pod. Over here, we have our second grade, and over here, we have our third grade. Here are our bathrooms, and here we'll have flexible seating. Welcome to the blue pod, we have our restrooms, our fourth grade classrooms, and our fifth grade classrooms. As Sadie said, you will be, have flexible seating, and you'll be a communicator, a collaborator, a critical thinker, and contribute in our classrooms. They'll pretty much look the same. Each student will get a copy, and surprise, we'll get some. Every classroom will have their own speakers so every child can hear. And on the teacher's microphone, there's a little button, and when they press it, the teacher will help right away. This is the teacher's work area, will have mailboxes and a coffee machine. In the administration area, we have the records room, we have the guidance office, and we have the SRO office. And this is the principal's office. You're doing a great job helping Mr. Grace keep it up. This is the bookkeeper room, and the conference room. And this is a staff bathroom, which we've never had before. I bet Ms. Rice is excited about that. This is the reception area, and this is the nurse's office with a little bathroom. And these are the lights. Welcome to our cafeteria. Over here is where you'll dump your trays. Over here is where you'll get your lunch. To family resource center. Have a washing area, a storage area, and a changing area. Let's head out back and get to the playground. This is the preschool playground that will be fenced in all around. Preschool kids will come right out of their classroom and onto this amazing playground. Some rubber surface, which is wheelchair accessible and safe, or just with a grant. Welcome to our playground. This playground is also wheelchair accessible. This is the parent drop-off pickup line. And around this loop, it can fit about 170 cars. In the front of the building is the bus lane. And look at all this parking for teachers and parents. How did the construction take for the new school?
We started the project in March of 2024, and we moved in with students on January 6, 2026.
Ooh. What's your favorite part about the new school?
I think besides that it's so safe, I think that the view out back is beautiful, this cafeteria is beautiful, and all the classrooms having sound systems, so every student can learn to their best potential, is my thing.
Parents want to know what makes this school so safe.
Both entrances at the front and the back have security vestibles. When somebody comes into the building, they have to be buzzed to get into the building. If they make it to the office, they have to be buzzed to get out of the office. They can't get through any door unless somebody, one of the staff members actually lets them through that door.
That sounds really safe. Will parents and students get a tour of the new building before school starts?
Absolutely, we're going to have a grand opening ceremony in December, probably around the 15th. We have to set the date after I know all of the furniture is going to be here.
On behalf of all of the staff and students, thank you so much for your hard work. We can't wait to start here at the new SES. Thanks for tuning in to the Pirate's Ride Podcast.
So now you guys, talk to them a little bit about what you, what you found in the new school, what are your favorite parts? They set this school up, so you talk to them about what you saw.
I really liked the discovery zones in there, and all the different colored pods. Thought that was really cool, and I have the library, the 3D trading library. I just like everything in there, and my most favorite part is probably our classroom. My favorite is the gym and the library.
My favorite is probably the security, because you can't be too safe.
Ms. Rice, do you have anything to add?
Oh, I have plenty. When Ms. Watson took us on the NTI, I was like, I have cold chills, I'm gonna cry. Until you step in there, you really don't have the full impact of how beautiful of a building it is. Every thought went into this, and I really appreciate it.
And she's talking about the staff on the NTI.
Yeah, on the staff.
All of the staff out there.
And it was amazing. And I was, I have cold chills just thinking about it, because it's gorgeous, and I'm so excited. We're all so excited, and the kids are pumped up. Every thought went into this, especially like the safety. That's a big concern that we all have as educators now, is how safe are our students going to be? Or, you know, are they gonna, is somebody going to be there to protect them? Are there places in, I can't even talk, I'm so emotional, I'm sorry. But the security vestibles, that is a good way to have some peace of mind. The discovery zones the students talked about, if you know anything about what our goal here in Powell County is, the four Cs, the learner profile, we want them to be collaborators, communicators, contribute, all those things. If you know anything, that's our goal, that's our big thing, teaching them to be good humans and work together. And so in those discovery zones, they're going to have those opportunities to work together in different grade levels. It's going to be awesome. And it's just beautiful. Come from the old SES, you know, we're in the trenches there. I can't wait to have windows that open and doors that close and open quickly, and not have to hold on to my table to not roll into the wall. So thank you all, it's beautiful, we can't wait, we're going to make you all proud.
None of that was pre-rehearsed. I went in and I'm like, okay, here's this and here's that, and they just took it. And when Sadie got in that green pod, and she said, we're going to be a communicator collaborator, I thought, we sure are.
You have to know these kids, they, they got it going on, and they make SES proud, all of our kids do.
So we'll share this video out with the public so that they get a little bit of a glimpse, and I'm gonna, is it okay with you to lead right into my communication toward, I'll kind of flip it, and I'll talk a little bit about the new school. So they did this on Friday, and right now, as of yesterday and today, furniture's being delivered. So we've got some chairs in there now, tables, all of the classrooms are waxed, so furniture's going into those areas. The office area still needs some wax, but cafeteria tables were delivered today. Mrs. Young and Kellner, those, those were delivered, and they're super nice. Just couldn't be more proud of that building and things going on out there, so. They make sure that there aren't other things that I wanted to tell you about the, all the audio enhancement that they're, they are installing all of those systems. And when, I think it was Presley maybe talked about the audio enhancement, and that when you press the button, somebody comes, or was that Sadie? One of those two girls, Presley was in there. So all of the teachers will wear a microphone, and they'll have four speakers, and each of the classrooms have four speakers in the ceiling, so they can talk at a normal level, but no matter where a child is in that room, they'll be able to hear. And then there's what's called a panic button, so if something were to go wrong in the classroom and they need help, they'll hit that button, and it'll send a signal to the front office, and they'll know that something is needed in that classroom. So that's a really nice feature of that. The biggest challenge that we're having out there right now is AT&amp;T still has to come and move their lines off the pole. That will allow those poles to be taken down, and they can finish going out to the road. They did some surface black topping out there today, but if anybody here knows anybody with AT&amp;T, we really need their help to get those lines off the poles. We've tried for a long time, and hopefully they'll get on to that soon. There will be another water shut-off, but it's coming Monday, the 24th, when we're not in school, and that will mostly affect across the road. That will give us the ability then to tie water to a building, because we don't have water yet to the building. But by the 25th, we will have. We're just really close to completion. I spent all the time there, the streets are going through, and I make my own punch lists, they call them, those last final things I definitely want done, and I've got my notebook full. And we sit, I sit down with the construction managers to make sure that everything is just right on the building. So I'm really proud of how the kids portrayed that building. They did a really good job showing it all and talking about their favorite parts. And I think my favorite part of that video was their excitement in seeing the gym. They couldn't go in, but they noticed the rock wall and the, I took some of those pictures with my drone. I wasn't allowed in either, that was really hard for me, but I took drone pictures so that, you know, they could see. So other things that I want to share with you, I sent a message to you, and I put the news out on Facebook, that we were awarded the COPS School Violence Prevention Program Grant. That brings $480,982, so nearly $481,000 to the district for projects on our DFP. The total cost of that project is $641,309, so we have a match, and we knew that going in. So our match then is $160,000, and all of that total is going to help us take care of so many things to try to bring other schools up to the safety factor that this new school has, because all schools will have key card access, so we don't have to give out physical keys anymore. And when we change the keying system, it will pair up with the new St. Elementary's keying system. So one grand master key will get my SROs in any building, but they won't really need that grand master key, because they'll all have key card access when it's done. So the safety of that is if somebody leaves the district, we just cut off their card, kind of like a motel. You don't have access to it anymore, and we don't have, we don't have the key swapped anymore. So that's a high standard of that. I'm just tickled to death to get it. Mr. Lyons helped in the writing of that by gathering all of the different companies. We had to get several quotes in order to submit to the grant. And then we went and just toured all the buildings, looked at all the doors, determined what doors, and probably where some, a lot of groundwork was laid out. But it's not just about keys. Bowen Elementary will get some new cameras, and we put cameras at other locations that we noticed were kind of blind spots for some of the schools. And then PA systems, part of this grant was about good communication, so the PA systems at Bowen and Clay City will be upgraded. And we'll also have equipment to have an app on our phones called Zello, and that app is currently used by law enforcement here in the district, and we're kind of tied to it as an evac tool, because we use our buses in case of an evacuation. But by us having our own equipment, we'll be able to communicate with each other, like push to talk on our phones, so if communication goes down in the buildings, this will be another form of communication. So lots of exciting things there. On November 5th, I attended the Superintendent Advisory Council with the Commission of Education. We talked about some of the school facility commission funding, and how, how some other states do the, do their facility funding. And I did leave that meeting a little early, because that was the day that there was a, the report of a possible gun weapon in the high school. And I just wanted to report to the board how proud I was of our team back here. I was in Frankfurt, and I just made a few phone calls, my district staff went out to the school. Dr. Keke had things lined out, she assigned them different places. The whole team, all of these people worked together, all of the SROs came to the school, they brought local law enforcement, and I think it was like less than 35 minutes, wasn't it?
About 22 minutes, we searched 35 classrooms, 700 walkers, and 500 kids that were there that day.
I'm very proud of that team. That's, that's a quick response, and it just made me feel really good that I was communicating all the way home, I was trying to get back, but they had it. I do have some information on the item we tabled last time in regards to the property that will come up in the property section, but in that conversation with David Brooks from Houchn's Insurance, we noticed some other discrepancies in the facilities that we're insuring. So he came down, and we went over the whole district, communicated through that. And we also talked about the need in December to get rid of the construction insurance and bring onboard our new school. So we're make, we'll have something in December for you guys to look at there. And then I know they're having a band concert in here, in the new gym today, and they've got the floor all covered, but hopefully you got to at least see some pictures if you haven't been able to come in. This new gym is amazing. I call it a new gym, the gym's still the gym, but it's a new wall, and it's a new floor, and we're really excited to have that work done. Do you have any questions about anything?
Item six, public comments.
I have the one sheet from Mr. Adam Brown. I don't know, Mr. Trace, is anybody else signed up on that?
I just see the one name. Hello, everybody. I just wanted to let you know, the community seems to have a problem with communication, so we felt a need to kind of backfill that with something positive, right? So some community members and myself formed a committee, it's called Powell County Oversack Committee. What we'd like to do is go visit all boards in the entire county, the city, all of them. Because, I mean, believe it or not, I think the city does the best job of broadcasting their meeting. Although you can't comment through the videos, at least community members, everybody in the community, no matter where they're at, they can watch the video. And then if they want to come back in the next meeting, they can come back and leave a comment or talk to us. We, we just want to provide another, so in essence, we have three purposes. We want to build a better bridge of communication between all boards, entities, government agencies, and be able to feed that back to the community, and I think that's fair. So then accountability, most everybody that we're going to be talking to are elected officials. We usually don't hear or receive from you after the election. So we'd like to build a better relationship so that those elected officials can have some more communication back to the community. So we would encourage all elected officials to have more town hall meetings, have more one-page notes. I don't know if all of y'all have emails or whatever that you could, you know, it may, there's a learning curve. If you get all your constituents to get a email blast, you know, and you just talk to each other, you know? I think that would solve a lot of issues. And then transparency, you know, there's a lot of been, a lot of record requests, and everybody's getting tore up over, but there, there is a problem with the general public doesn't really know what goes on in most of these boards or government agencies as far as budgets or far as running such a large organization. So, you know, being more transparent, and then when, when people get told that they, they don't understand, but then when people try to understand, they get misjudged for why they're looking at records and trying to understand. You know, and this is all new, and I understand, so we'll try to hone that and be less abrasive. Does that make sense? Like, everybody needs to get along, and we can just get that information out. So I just wanted to make a short introduction first, and hopefully this will start to help the curtsy thing. But I guess to start off, so a lot of people were upset, and a lot of people can't come to these meetings, so I offered if they had questions or comments, they could ask me, and I would come and just be their voice. I know you don't have to answer the questions, you're more than welcome to now, but if I can just get it out there. Most of y'all have my email address probably, so if you compile an answer and you can send it back, then I could get that answer back to those people, or vice versa, so just another form. One question was, and I know this is a sore topic, but if, if we knew the nickel tax was coming up, why couldn't we have, say, January of last year, started talking about it to the community? Coming up with ideas, or just, you know, instead of ripping the Band-Aid off at once, I want to know why we couldn't have had a few months to deliberate on it between the community, you all talking to your constituents, getting their feedback and their feel, and then in August, having the three meetings, maybe, you know, does that make sense? I mean, is that fair? So that was just a question. I want to know why we couldn't have done it sooner and gave people a little more time to think or talk about it. So had somebody ask, if, if the board can ask for help to move the elementary school to the new elementary school, why can't the board ask people in the public to volunteer to help maintain outside facilities, such as fields, or grounds, or yards, or whatnot? I'm not going to ask that question here. So does everybody have an email address that I could send you an email that I can find online?
They all, they all, we all have school board email addresses, it's first name.
So if you wouldn't mind, be on the lookout for an email, I'm going to shoot you off question. That way, nobody's on the spot. If you want to answer it, you can answer it, and then you give me permission to give that answer to the people who asked the question, I think it's fair of them.
So Ms. Maryman's is kathy.maryman2. So everybody else's is their first name dot last name at Powell.
But can I find those on there?
I'm not sure, but email addresses are, at one time, we were told we couldn't link our email addresses directly from the website, because it would produce spam or something. That was years ago, I don't know if they're on there or not, but they're all first name dot last name, we're all be glad to send those to you.
The only reason she said mine was different and had a two after my name, because I had been a school employee and had a school email, so I had to be differentiated. So it has a two, that's the only difference in the standard email for all people in the school district.
Got you, thank you. And then I'll end on this one, again, it's a sore topic. If people ask, that's what we're, you know, instead of trying to look like we're trying to hide anything, if we're open and we talk about it, I think it's a lot better than what's been going on here lately. So after the election, if, if it fails, if it, I guess if it's voted no, and the nickel is recalled, does the board plan on taking the comp rate or the comp plus four? So does anybody need clarification on that question, or need to understand it? So the comment that came in from this is, and I'll share it with you, they just think that it's important to know your intentions ahead of time. It's about trust and whether the board is acting in the best interest of the whole community, especially during a time when so many households are struggling. So they just wanted to know ahead of time if the vote is no, do you intend to take just the comp rate or the comp plus four? Does anybody have any questions for me? So I thank you for your time, and hopefully we can all start getting back to loving each other. Thank you.
Item seven is consent agenda. We've all had time to get to consent items. Any questions about any of those items?
For any grants that we have on this consent agenda that our school can receive, we'll make a motion that we approve those, we try to get that number.
I'm second.
Second, okay, all in favor? Item 28, financial audit report.
Okay, Ms. Frager is out with her family right now, and so normally she would introduce our auditors, but I'm going to let our speaker introduce himself, your name was, I forgot. Ryan Laskin. Ryan Laskin. We have several auditors from the firm, but he's from Summers, McCrery, and Sparks, and the draft, I'm not even going to let him talk about why this is draft format. So go ahead and just take it up.
Do you think Superintendent Watson said, my name's Ryan Laskin, we're from Summers, McCrery, and Sparks, and this is our fifth year out here. What I'm going to do tonight is hit on some highlights in the, in the draft of the audit report. And she said it is a draft typically during this board meeting, we are presenting the final audit report. However, we are awaiting on congressional approval of a compliance supplement that we have to follow to audit your federal programs. So typically, the federal government releases this compliance supplement in the summer, and then we perform the audit in the fall. However, for whatever reason, this year, they did not release a draft of it until August, and they still have not approved it, and no, they haven't been working. So I don't know, we don't know when that's going to happen. Our governing board, the AICPA, has said we are not allowed to release any audit reports until that final version has been released. Because of that, KE has extended the due date from November 15th to December 31st, and I expect probably before Thanksgiving, then have to move that due date again, because it doesn't show any signs of being approved. So we have had discussions with the boards that we audit, and given the option for doing the draft. We don't expect any numbers in the audit to change at all, regardless of what happens with the compliance supplement. The only thing that could occur is if in the federal programs that we audited within the district, if they have added additional compliance, we would have to come back and test those compliances. The only thing that could change in the audit report would be additional comments or findings if you did meet those regulations. So we are going to go through. So, um, we are going to go through this draft here. Starting, uh, pages one through three. That one earlier?
We wanted to get to page.
Just page one. Yes. Two pages down.
Oh.
Yep. Right there. This is the independent auditor's report. Uh, the board received an unmodified opinion, which is a clean audit report. Uh, the second paragraph there states, "The financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects." That's what we want. And in the third paragraph, emphasis of matter, uh, "The board was required to adopt a new accounting principle this year uh, with regards to how compensated absentees are recorded in the financials." And we'll touch on that in a little bit, but that's, that's the only real change to the financials this year versus the prior years. Um, on page six, uh, page, pages four through nine are what's known as management's discussion analysis. And that's the board's summary of the financial report. What's nice about the, uh, management discussion analysis is it has compared to financials from the prior year. So it's much easier to review those. So on page six, it is not. Um, go along, Ryan. Right there. Um, so that, what you're looking at there on that chart is your statement of net positions for 2025 and 2024. The total assets for the year ending June thirty, 2025 increased by almost $5 million. And it was primarily due to an increase in capital assets because of the ongoing destruction. Your deferred outflows, which are related to, um, state pension and OPEB, uh, decreased $1,377,000. Your total liabilities went down a little bit more than $1.2 million. And that was, uh, due to a decrease in bond obligations and pension and OPEB liability. Your deferred inflows also went down a little more than $1.7 million. And again, that's related to the state pension and OPEB. Uh, overall, your net position is $6.5 million. Scrolling down there at the bottom of that page, this is your, uh, summary of revenue and expenses for the year. Uh, you can see both columns for 2025 and 2024. Your total revenue under governmental activities increased a little bit more than $1.2 million. And that was due to an increase in state grants. And your total expenses decreased $824,000. And that was due to a decrease in on behalf payers that the state pays on your behalf. Uh, your business type activities, this is your food service. Your total revenue went down $100,000 and that was due to a decrease in federal revenue. And your total expenses went up $53,000. And that was primarily due to an increase in employee-related expenses. Going to page seven, at the bottom of page seven, um, you're going to see another summary of revenue and expenses. The first two financial report, or summaries that we just looked at were government audit financial statements. And that's a full accrual basis of accounting. It's more like what a business operates on. This right here is on a modified basis of accounting. This is what you do your projection on. So this, this financial statement is probably more aligned with what you're used to looking at. Um, here, your general fund, your revenue went down almost $100,000. Not much of a change there, but your expenses did go up $1,461,000. And that was primarily due to an increase in employee costs and a shift of expenses from special revenue over to the general fund for 2025. Um, your special revenue fund, uh, your revenue there decreased by $608,000. And that was due to a decrease in federal funding. And then to offset that, your expenses went down $512,000. And that was just due to a lack of revenue. Your construction fund, your revenue went up $3,271,000 and that was due to GAAP funding provided by Kentucky. And then your expenses went up $11,943,000 and that was due to ongoing construction. Page nineteen. Page nineteen is going to be your profit loss for your proprietary fund, which is your food service. And overall, for this year, your food service saw a loss of $111,540. And that was, uh, primarily due to a decrease in federal funding and an increase in employee costs. So pages twenty-three through sixty-seven are note, are the notes to the financial statements. And the notes offer a little bit more detail to the numbers that you see in the financials. But I'm going to just hit on a few notes, starting on page thirty-seven. And on page thirty-seven, you're going to see a chart that outlines, um, the activity within your capital assets for the year. I usually don't hit on it, but since you have the construction going on, there's a big number in there. So right there, that's it. Uh, the second line item is your construction progress. You can see that you had $16,432,000 in additions this year. And then the disposals aren't really disposals. They're just moving it out of construction in progress and down into buildings and improvements. So you can see the activity there. Overall, um, you saw a positive or saw an increase in, uh, construction progress of $13,460,000. Page thirty-nine. Yep. This is your, uh, long-term debt note. You can see in that chart right there, as of June thirty, 2025, the district had $30,650,000 in debt. And that debt is scheduled to be paid off in 2049. Going to the next page. You also had finance purchases. These are typically, uh, bus purchases. And the outstanding balance on those as of June thirty, 2025 was $664,240. And those are scheduled to be paid off in 2035. Moving on to page forty-seven. The next, uh, few numbers that I give you are all related to pension and OPEB, uh, liabilities. And they all come from the state actuary report. So on page forty-seven, you're going to see, um, the district's proportionate share of the CRS liability that the state carries. And as of June thirty, 2025, the district's proportionate share is $6,268,979. And that shows up as a liability in your books. Page fifty-two. Note seven. On that bottom paragraph there, um, we had something kind of unusual happen last year, but it's still trending in the right direction. So, um, that paragraph that's right in the middle, "At June thirty, 2025, the district reported an asset related to, um, CRS OPEB liability." So it's always been a liability and then last year it flipped to an asset. So this year, your asset is $181,501, which is an actual increase of $21,120 from the prior year. Uh, page fifty-six is your OPEB liability related to KT RS. And as of June thirty, 2025, the district's liability for KT RS OPEB was $2,698,000. And then all those, again, are related to, uh, state pension and OPEB and they come from the actuary reports. On page sixty-six. Note fifteen. That's it right there. Um, these are your on behalf payments. So these are payments that the state makes on your behalf. The money doesn't flow through here, but it is recorded in your books as, uh, revenue and expenses. So your total on behalf payments for the year ending June thirty, 2025 was $10,543,313. And that is a decrease of $1,014,000 from the prior year. Uh, page sixty-seven, which I believe, yep, it's the next page. So this is the change in the accounting principle that occurred this year and it's related to compensated absences. And it was retroactive. So what we had to do was go in and recalculate the compensated absences as of June thirty, 2024, under the new method and apply that effect to your books. So what happened was your net assets decreased by $398,101 as of June thirty, 2024, because of this new accounting principle. And you'll see that in the financials. Uh, pages sixty-eight through seventy-seven are required supplementary information with, uh, with regards to the pension and OPEB liability. And it all comes from the state actuary report. Pages seventy-eight and seventy-nine.
So this is seventy-eight.
Uh, the next one down there. Yep. Uh, seventy-eight and seventy-nine are your balance sheets and profit losses of what is deemed non-major, uh, funds within the district. So you've got, uh, your student activity, your debt service, your district activity. Numbers are found here in the back of the report. Going on to page eighty through eighty-three is your school activity funds. Page eighty is a summary by school of revenue and expenses. And you can see their ending balance as of the end of the year. And then page, um, eighty-two and eighty-three is the high school. Uh, we're required to show each fund's activity at the high school level. None of the individual activity funds ended the year with a negative balance, which is good. Um, page eighty-four through eighty-five is your schedule of federal expenditures. This is all your federal money that came through the district and got spent during the year. Page eighty-seven and eighty-eight is our report on the internal controls. In accordance with government auditing standards, we had no findings with regards to your government auditing standards. Page eighty-nine through ninety-one is our report on compliance with federal programs. And again, this is the one that may change, uh, with, um, the compliance supplement being approved. However, um, this year we audited a Title I in Europe. And those are very, uh, well-established programs. We don't expect any new compliance, uh, regulations in the approved supplement. So I would, I would, uh, be highly surprised if this report changes at all. Um, we had no findings at the federal level at all. So no findings in the. Pages ninety-six through ninety-seven is what is, uh, known as management comments. These are areas that we came across that we think could be improved on. And then at the activity fund level, that did not meet the, uh, state regulations requirements. So at the board level, we had one comment and it was with regards to, uh, approving cash disbursements. Um, as of now, the finance director is taking confirmation that items were, uh, goods or services were received either verbally or by email. And, uh, we were recommending that, uh, verbal confirmation isn't really good. There's no paper trail there. So, uh, Alicia offered this response and I think that will solve the problem going forward. Um, we have one comment at the high school with regards to accounts payable, accounts receivable form. It's not an uncommon comment. And then at Bowen Elementary, we had one comment as well on the, on the next page.
Can you explain to them what that is?
Yes. So as part of, per the state guidelines, there's an annual report that each school has to provide. And part of that packet is a accounts payable, accounts receivable form. Um, some, some schools do not generate it if they don't have any accounts payable, accounts receivable. As part of our auditing procedures, we review the records to determine if there are any accounts payable, accounts receivables. Um, we have a lot of districts that have moved, uh, all of their stuff into munis. And then we have some districts that are going to use the activity funds in, uh, a third-party bookkeeping software. So I kind of get it in different directions. And I, I have come down to, if the form is not there, I used to make a comment if the form wasn't there. But now if the form is not prepared and we don't find anything, I don't worry about it. Um, so if the form wasn't prepared and we went in and we found something, then we would make a comment that the form should have been prepared because these accounts payable and accounts receivables are left off. Or they did provide us a listing of accounts payable, accounts receivable in the year. And then during our testing, we found additional ones. So I don't, I don't recall which was the case. Either way, we had to add accounts payable or accounts receivable that were not.
And that one form was not completed?
Yep. Yep.
And that was for the high school and at Bowen Elementary, guys?
Same thing. Yes. Um, those were the only two comments, uh, during our activity fund testing. And then this page right here is a status of prior year comments. And in the prior year, we had four activity fund comments and all of those were resolved. So when we did the testing this year, we did not have any repeat comments. So overall, um, it was a very good audit report. I don't see any real concerns in it. Um, and then what we've been telling everybody is once we get the final compliance supplement, we'll review it. If we don't have to do anything, we'll let Alicia know and then we'll issue the final report with the new date on it and provide you guys with final copies and then we'll send it to K D B at that point in time. If, for whatever reason, uh, there are additional requirements, we come back and do that testing. If there's no findings related to those, this will still be the final report. If there is, we'll let Alicia know if it's something that you have done with us, we can come back and do that. Or she can just relay the information and we'll deal with it.
Any questions?
Oh, good to hear.
Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Motion for the approval of job report.
I will make a motion to approve the audit.
Motion carried. Item nine, cardiac emergency response plan.
So this is actually revised, an updated version of our response plan. We've added things to it that's enhanced it quite a bit. We think some other plans we never take place there on the school year. Laura, what about you? What about grants you were seeing for that?
We might remember that spring, uh, if I had a grant and we were awarded that grant. And the only AEDs, so those had the first, uh, prior AEDs. So we were able to put some additional AEDs out and travel AEDs. So several AEDs out in the schools are present or out of the house. So that's part of this plan as well. So we have to, um, to involve those.
To go along with that, this plan includes mapping for every building. That, that shows where each AED is located in the building along with this plan. And also we have, uh, we audited our, uh, cardiac devices team members to make sure that everyone is CPR and medical trained. All the teams we have in place now, I've seen one of those people are CPR and medical trained. In addition to that, uh, after Christmas break, we could be actually doing live practice sessions with each team at each school. Um, and you guys are more than welcome to come and watch that. I'm sure it'll be interesting first time. But as, as we go on, they'll, they'll, they'll hone in on their skills. And if we are unfortunate enough to have a cardiac event, training will just take over. And, uh, we might be able to do some, do some, save a life.
If there's anything you wanted to highlight, feel free to touch the screen. I don't know if you wanted to go anywhere on that, but I'm just struggling to get it to go.
That's okay. Um, I, I just assumed that you guys have read over it.
On the mapping, does our, do they have a copy of the mapping where things are?
Part of the plan is we, we incorporate those entities, law enforcement into this. And once, once we complete the, um, the practice sessions, they will all be able to have a copy of those.
It's kind of one of those same lines, I'm going to be honest with you. The problem with the phone system is however it's set up, is if someone's calling, or does it come back to that central address?
That is something that for, for whatever reason, whenever nine one one is called at, at, at the last update, it gives the high school's address. And I haven't quite able to figure that out just yet. But something that dispatch is concerned about, something we're working with, um, that hasn't been figured out this year.
I can speak to that if that's okay. That's okay. Um, so Doug let us know about this. And so we've been working, uh, my network engineer and I have been going back and forth with dispatch. And we've narrowed it down to the fact that our hub service or our main servers are hosted at the high school. And since most of these phones are data lines, then everything's, goes back to that school. So we're going back and forth with dispatch to get that, that issue fixed. And then we will schedule a day to kind of do some tests so that we can call from the schools and go back and forth. What did it show up as until we get that fixed? So.
The thing is right now that we do at S R O.
Yeah.
There's somebody on.
There are multiple times that schools have to call agencies and I've always, you know, let them know where they. So far, that is the place that it's worked out. They have some locations to go. And then we've come out in there, you know, the team members are trying, um, we have multiple, multiple staff members that are trying as well. So it will be above and beyond just the team members. Um, there's multiple staff members that are. There's multiple staff members that are.
You can't beat the little three phone call. That time's late.
The goal is to have a team member who can respond within, truly within seconds to a mental situation. So what we wanted our teams to do in the building, I'll give you the hallway as an example, we would want a member in A hallway, B hallway, C hallway, D front, G hallway, E hallway, a member from each of those areas, so if something happens, somebody immediately there, as opposed to having five members in B hallway, one member in A hallway, and something happened in B and C or G. So that's the goal. Help them get there.
So we need approval at this point.
I'll make a motion. You'll please go ahead. I'll second that. Okay. Ten, high school boys' basketball overnight trip request.
I saw this profile here earlier, is this still here?
Yeah.
Would you like to address the board on anything with your trip?
Just, we are going to Somerset for a Christmas tournament. We're requesting to stay just one night on the twenty-second. We played the later game that night, and then an earlier game on Tuesday, so we're just requesting an opportunity to, instead of traveling all the way back from Somerset on the bus, getting up early and then having to go back, of staying that one night there in Somerset.
I'm guessing these boys work pretty hard to earn the money for this all?
They have, yes, they've worked their tails off to earn that, so I'm real proud of them for that. So we appreciate the opportunity, if we could, to be able to do that. A little team bonding time is open, so.
Absolutely.
Thanks.
I'll definitely make a motion. I'll leave this one, definitely.
All in favor?
Absolutely.
Updated policy, zero four point three one one.
This relates to the audit, finance audit, that he just mentioned, and he mentioned that Ms. Fraser had commented back that we would adjust this policy. Previously, our policy, previously, our policy said, confirmation that invoice materials were received in accurate quantity and in good order, and it didn't specify that that was in writing, their suggestion was, and we do that most of the time in writing anyway, by signing the packing slips and the invoices, but we wanted to put it in policy so that it was, that is what we do. So Ms. Fraser said to add confirmation via signed documents such as packing slips, invoices, or via email from the purchaser, that the invoice materials or services, because it could be some kind of a service that is performed, were received in accurate quantity and good order. So this would be a first reading of this policy to help with that issue from the audit.
Is there a motion for the approval of first reading? I'll make a motion. Second. All in favor? Motion carried. Item twelve, review of procedure update to zero four point three one AED.
So procedures just have to be reviewed by the board, and if you want anything changed, change that. This is a small change, also based on, based on the audit, but as she was reading through, trying to make sure that we impacted all policies and procedures that we needed to, she noticed that it was saying that the school slash district finance officer clears the invoice, we just wanted to make sure, sometimes the school account clerk does that, so we call them account clerks now, and you can see down here, the last time that this was revised was two thousand. So we're just bringing that into a little bit more current language, so that they know that they can take their invoices, and their school account clerks, those school purchases go to the account clerks and the district purchases, and to the finance officer or asking them. So it's just a small.
No, unless you have something else that you'd like to add or change. Okay, thirteen, review of procedure zero three point one one AED.
This is a procedure that I thought we changed a long time ago, and when I went online to find it, for our HR person, it hadn't been reviewed. So this is just a procedure. When we get a new employee, we have to go and verify their employment with, a classified employee, we have to verify their employment with other entities. So we just hired a first director at Clay City, so we have to go back to her other employers and say, can you confirm this many years of experience, and what type of work did they do? There's really not been that place to put that type of duties on our form. So we changed this, and we've been using it, but it wasn't in our official board records. We also have an email address now that is, that comes to all HR staff, instead of saying to fax it, because when it comes to a fax now, it comes to a copying machine at the office. And again, this was last revised in 2011, so it's fourteen years old, and we're just trying to update this to be more what we need now, when we hire somebody.
Next is instruction.
We have principal reports. Any principals need to get back to something, that needs to say, go first this time? Aren't they lovely? We'll just go in order here, we'll go with Bowen Elementary.
I'm struggling with nothing so good tonight. Hot, all the time. All of our allergies go really weird, trying to do something. Spare room, so, Bowen Elementary, we've been focusing on our reading very heavily, and encouraging our students to make calls. So we have stackups, it's already results for our students, and we're looking to encourage students to achieve, we already have students who've achieved a grade level health over the entire school year. We had, last year, we only had four students who made it into the million word club, and some long track act throughout this year. So we're really trying to encourage them. Also, as part of that, we also have like outside libraries, that our students can take books and trade books when they're not in school. So that setup brought us another bar office, so that's been a great tool for our kids. With that, we set up what's called a Dallas form, a book form book that's featured in the free library, and students, I have a guest reader, I was actually the guest reader this week, for the first book, but the students can get that, and they can call the number, and they'll listen to me, or whoever, or you're just reading. So that's really been something that we've had going on to support reading. Also, as far as Foster's with Selonos, and we've had lots in observations, as our first observation window closes at the end of the month, actually, beginning of the week, so I've stayed a lot of time in professional, helping with direction, and doing all the great things, and finally, for the team to get.
Do you have any questions? Thank you for not making me. All right, Skye.
I've also written on here walkthroughs. Like Ms. Foster said, we're at the end of our observation window for the first semester here, so by Friday, we have to have either of any observations, which is ten to fifteen minutes, or full observation, which is forty-five minutes to an hour. Depending on our non-tenured teachers, they get full observation, tenured teachers get a minute, but I'm so, anyway, in the last couple of weeks, I've been every classroom. I'm down to three, I still have three yet to do. By Friday, but I'll get them. And the hardest part with walkthroughs is not, and that's my favorite part of the job, is getting into classrooms, that's, but the hardest part is finding the time to follow up on that, and getting back, and not getting pulled away to something else, have a good thirty minutes, and leave to talk with each teacher afterward, about what you saw, and offer them feedback and things, and, you know, it could range from anything, from their questioning, you know, you'll have some teachers that, a student asks a question, and the idea is to, you don't want to just come out and tell them what the answer is. Sometimes you want to ask them questions and get them thinking, and lead them there through your question, and things like that, and just student engagement, whether we have students talking with one another, and figuring out whatever the problem may be, or things like that. So anyway, a lot of my time has been on the walkthroughs, and this past month too, we've had teachers do peer walkthroughs on each other, and I kind of, I put some thought into that about who I have on the staff, some of my experienced teachers and inexperienced, and just who I thought might be good to, for them to go watch another teacher teach, and then, but I got a lot of good feedback on that too, the teachers really love that, watching each other. And then had our family reading night on the sixth, Savannah Creach, I'll say, in third grade, of course, that was Ms. Rice there with, yes, so we've discussed those teachers, and they all, they do things, but Ms. Creach primarily led the family reading night, and it was like a cafe, and, you know, the families came in, and we had books laying out, they could go around and sample different books, and through the PRI funds, we were able to buy enough books, so that every student that came that night, they got to leave with the book. So that was pretty cool, and just to kind of look around at the cafeteria, and families reading together, and then just decide which book they liked the best that they could have for the night. I guess that's pretty good. Any questions?
Thank you. Question? Is this him?
Go get him, girl.
I'm cheering him on.
He's been working for a long time.
Not even talking to her?
Yes.
That's why I was really happy to come part of the family.
So we also have been focusing on formative assessments in our PLC, and we've talked with Ms. Roach throughout the year, and just really, especially for a lot of our newer teachers, who kind of follow the traditional route to becoming a teacher, it's important to really focus in on what exactly a formative assessment is, and to use not just the math data that we take three times a year, but to also use daily, quick checks, exit tickets of learning, to see where our kids are, and to gauge their learning, be able to use that data in a small group, and constantly using that data to change where students are, and try to close those gaps and move them to different levels, ability levels. So we've spent some time on PLCs, and we're going to continue spending some time focusing on formative assessment. And we'll be, when we come back from seating breaks, we'll take our next round of math, so it'll be exciting to see where we are with that. And we'll be doing lots of those, so.
And after we get done, we also have been walkthroughs. And I'm going to be honest, it's probably, because coming from the background, I was always nervous, I was like, oh my gosh, this is what a walkthrough is, but it's probably become my favorite part of my job. I love getting in the classrooms, and yesterday I had one, I was like, I don't want to leave, it was so fun. Because I've only ever taught fifth grade, so I've been able to experience from preschool, back to my roots of fifth grade, and it's been great. And something we've really been focused on, is that immediate feedback with our walkthroughs, because when feedback is timely, helps teachers correct those misconceptions, reinforce new strategies, stay motivated, and ultimately, that leads to our students learning, and at the end of the day, our students learn, and our students win, that's the most important thing. Is that why we're all here?
Thank you all.
So at Pow Pow Middle School, we are doing all kinds of crazy things. We actually, I might have mentioned this last time, I forget, sometimes what I say, the CKC instructional courses that we've asked for, we have a partnership with the Central Kentucky Education Co-op, and so we feel like that one of the things that would benefit our teachers the most is having someone in their content area that is an expert, who is not too far away from the classroom, can come in and really work with them during that PLC time, where they can sit down and look at their standards, and plan effective lessons. We've used CKC quite a bit, and asked them to help us, help our teachers write effective lesson plans, like what can we do to really, truly deliver the best instruction to students?
We work with engagement surveys for our teachers. Yeah, they're amazing, honestly. They're a great asset for us.
Yes, they've been here the last couple of summers to do some PD, but we thought, you know, summer PD is great, but when you're right in the middle of it, and planning weekly, and trying to figure out how to keep that momentum going, we thought it would be good for them to come in and work with our content areas, and we're pretty excited about that. And our, we had our fall family extravaganza at the drive-in this year, our plan was to have PD, but then the weather happened, and the time changed, and all kinds of crazy things, but we had no idea what was going to happen right then. But we decided that we would do some PD that we're going to show to the spring, or either our spring family engagement. But we had, we had a fire pit with smores, we had lots of community vendors, actually, they were sorry I was there painting ornaments, we fed everybody, free food, it was just a good time, just a good time for people to come and just enjoy, and get to spend time with staff, and just have fun.
And like, we had a really good turnout, we had a lot of families show up, so that's always nice.
Yeah, it is. And of course, we had some jokes, we couldn't really do it here. Yeah, it wasn't fire ready. We had our parent-teacher conference also last week, and so we, again, just opened that up for teachers to come in, parents to come in with families, and have some time with their students and their teachers to look at their report card, and just kind of see what kind of things are going on. And with that, we had our science fair going on too, so that was the way to draw folks in here, to see what our students were doing with the science fair.
Yeah, we had a hundred families show up, that's pretty awesome for middle school, because your kids use middle school, they're like, ah, they're fine. But really, you know, your kids eat during middle school too, so that would be awesome to have that in your family.
And we created a digital walkthrough form, so basically, as soon as we do the walkthrough, we can fill that form out, and it sends a feedback immediately to the staff. So they seem to like that pretty good. We would go back and sit down and type emails usually, but sometimes things would kind of come up, it's kind of busy around here, and so just being able to get that, immediate feedback to them, they really seem to enjoy that. And we opened our gym, and it is beautiful, and we're so excited. One of the things that I would like to just say is, every student, regardless if they ever played ball or not, they were just so excited to see it, and as, as they would walk by, like about Friday before we officially opened it, that Monday, they were just so excited to get in there and just to see that, and it was so fun, just to watch them take pride in that, and it's been a really good experience. It started with just me asking if we could paint the gym walls, and then all of a sudden, we have a brand new gym. Yeah, it was amazing, we're very thankful for that, but lots of good stuff on them.
When I came in tonight, there were some of the band students, I guess, standing at the door, and I looked in the gym, and he said, you like it, it's all new.
And thanks to Dr. Kake, she let us use her floor covering today, we don't have ours yet.
I guess we have the fall band concert going on tonight.
Yes, I did have it.
And it was hatched, so we love the thing, which I just want to give to our fans.
All right, you got any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
So, it has been a jam-packed month since the last time we met. I looked at my calendar, and I was trying to just narrow it down to a few select things to share with you all, and I had trouble just keeping narrowing it down to these five, but these were some things that stood out over the past month. We had our college fair on October twenty-first, and we had more colleges represented in our gym than we've ever had before, which was really cool, giving our students just all of those different. which was really cool, giving our students just all of those different experiences and showing them what's available. We will have our trade fair the second semester where we'll have people from all of the different trades come in. We're still working to get just a larger representation there again, to show our kids all of the things that are available for them. We gave the pre-ACT and the ACT on October 28th. The state has officially switched to the SAT, but we met as an advent team and we decided what was best for our students, not based on what the state is asking of us, but those juniors especially, who have seen the ACT and prepared for the ACT, they were the ones that we were most concerned about giving them the ACT because those that are college bound, that's what they're going to be the most successful for because they're going to be exposed to the most for their three years of high school, or two and a half years of high school. So we went ahead and our PRI grant paid for us to administer that to our students. We will give the SAT in the spring, just like we're required to do, and we'll help them through that process so they'll actually have, our juniors will have an SAT and an ACT score by the end of this year. And we also have an increased level of formative assessments and using data to guide instruction. This is one of those foundational, like, teaching 101 things that we think is so automatic, especially if you've been in education for a while. We forget that our new teachers maybe don't have that ingrained in them. And so it's been refreshing to kind of go back to the, what I'm calling the basics and focus on these fundamental things, not just our newer teachers, but breathing life into it with our veteran teachers. And we just have been working on three different ways to use that, to use the data that we get every day. We learn, we learn what our kids are learning every day and then we use that to guide our instruction. And we've also started having teachers observe each other's classes. So we did this previously, but I would take a teacher along with me when I was going into a classroom. And Mr. Crow and Miss Nesta did the same thing for a while last year. But now we've kind of turned them loose and we're pointing out bright spots and I'm pairing up teachers. And it's not necessarily just a, a new teacher going to observe a veteran teacher. We have bright spots all over our building. I'm going to name one by name. Ms. Marks, our art teacher, second year of traditional teacher, and she is phenomenal. Have you seen any of the things she's doing on Facebook, the things that she can draw out of these kids, letting them be creative in just a different way? And she also has great classroom management. When I think of an art room, it makes me tense up a little bit because I'm a little bit type A and I like rows and neat and stacked. And when I go in her room and it's neat and it's really stacked and it's completely orderly, but then it's just also this beautiful mess everywhere, it's really cool. So we've started, even some of my veteran teachers are going in there, not necessarily to learn anything new, but just to get excited again about things that we have going on. So we're just taking a different approach to pairing up teachers and letting them get into each other's classrooms and then providing time for them to discuss what they saw, ask questions and just collaborate on things. The last one, I know this is instructional, the last one doesn't sound like it's instructional, but I will say, since I took this job four years ago, I keep going back to the meeting that we had when we started the learner profile and we had all the community members work, I think you were there. And the community members kept saying, we just want the graduates to be able to have soft skills. We want to be able to not look at their phone when they talk to us. We want to be able to replicate measure and know how to put in an order and balance checks and do all of these basic things. That has stuck with me. One of the beautiful things about having high schoolers is they are almost adults and we can turn things over to them. And this year, this Friday night, will be our second red white night that we have 100% turned over to the students. And when I say 100%, I mean, they created the agenda, they created every video, every picture, every light cue, every person that's in place with a job to do. They even gave me an assignment, I am the light switch person, that's the only job they would give me is I have a specific time when I flip the lights on and off and that's it. And it's really cool to see that, that they, they ordered things, they talked to, we couldn't get, I did a social media post, we couldn't get Ethan because they had picked a new date for it. And at first they were completely brokenhearted, but then they just went into action. And the guys from Fox 56 that did the pep rally, some of them had made connections with them and they were like, hey, will you come and see this for us? And they said, sure, we'll be there. So they are problem solving, they are being critical thinkers and communicators and collaborators. And if you have time, come out to red white night, even if you're not a sports fan. I think just looking at it through the lens of knowing a group of high school freshmen, sophomores, juniors and seniors came together and collectively pulled off an event that used to be just done by adults. It just, it makes me proud, it's an impressive thing. And at 100% in my mind, goes along with instruction.
Seeing our kids push a button, get excited, just a little bit. I love, hey, we got pictures tonight for this team or that team and it's been taken by juniors, seniors. And then you get those pictures and it looks better than most professional photography. And those skills that they're learning that they can use.
We have kids getting job offers their senior year of high school.
And there's no test that can show you that.
Some of the best leadership skills everyone.
This group of seniors, pretty much going to school.
The ACT schools, you kind of touched on, college universities traditionally accept those for a full time, right?
Yes, so they still, even right now, they accept both. But traditionally and because Kentucky is always on the ACT, you'll see on a lot of them, they'll have an SAT equivalent, like they'll just translate your score. If you've got this in the SAT, this is what it would have been about on the ACT and what we're looking for. They just don't publicize the SAT. So I would say within the next three years, you'll probably start to see that flip and they'll have both scores. But yes, you can have either to get it. Thank you.
Okay, so I'll be taking care of Ms. Frasier's items as well. But this is the additional property coverage that we talked about last time and it enabled it. Ms. Frasier, Mr. Ives and I sat down with our insurance agent and we discussed the need of additional insurance. Insurance will not cover the normal deterioration of that sewer plant. It's only going to cover those items. So what, what the piece was that we were looking at was property in the open. That means playground equipment, that means the fence, that means the shed. That means if a tornado hit that area, what things might, might happen to property in the open that is not actually physically attached. So when we got to looking at how much property in the open, insurance phone already had, which was around $218,000, that easily would cover most everything that was property in the open up there. So we do not recommend taking additional coverage. But it is the board's purview, if you wish to do that, then, and this was brought to us by the insurance company. When we do a survey for the insurance company, they asked us if we had a sewer plant and we did. So then they offered us additional coverage for it, but there really isn't much up there.
It's all in the ground.
It is. So our recommendation is that we don't take additional coverage.
I'll make a motion, we've been out of this, this makes me spend money on something we're not going to give our time.
Second, I'll second, all in favor.
So you've had these, these direct purchase orders and pay-ups for November and I recommend that we pay our bills.
Is there a motion? I'll make a motion. Second, Ms. Frasier, all in favor. She carries. New Stanton Elementary Pay Act, number 21.
Pulls this up to show what this amount is, but this is again, got over carefully by our construction manager. So the invoices and requests for payment for this payout would be. It's all still within the construction budget.
I'll make a motion, Pay Act number 21. All in favor. Motion carries. New Stanton Elementary change order.
There are three change orders that we're bringing tonight. The first one actually was approved for us to, for me to make the decision because there's been a lot of back and forth between what the city needs for the water service and how to, how to obtain that. So this first one is issued to Twin Lakes Fire Service for $86,029. That helps us to be able to do the things that the city requested with the, with the water. The middle change order is in the amount of $42,838 and that's for relocating the forced main. And that is also to be compliant with the local utility company requests. And then the final one, it was in the amount of $5,552 and that was, the health department requires the floors inside the freezer and cooler to be sealed. And it wasn't in the original bid. So we had to seal it and we talked about various options and this was a good option that the health department approved. Those are the three change orders.
Motion for the change order.
All this stuff with the water company is something that we get, we get water to the school. We don't approve it, then we're not getting it. It's also something that is, should have not been seen ahead of time, there's no way to know this.
Well, there wouldn't have been any way to know this exactly. They had a plan, but people change over time. So the new people at the city wanted to see certain things and they just worked it out between Nesbit and our construction crew.
Motion. I'll make a motion to approve. Second. Ms. Frasier, all in favor. District HVAC equipment.
Okay, so this is our equipment, the technical equipment for our large HVAC project. We have a roof EG and this is equipment that we know has been purchased. We have photos of the actual.
Motion.
I'll make that motion.
Second. Ms. Frasier, all in favor. High school roof pay act number two.
Okay, and this is the roofing project that we've got going. So right now they're just working on the high school. They make significant progress every week that, that we don't have rain. They're close to getting done. So this is the second payout in the high school roof project.
I will make a motion to approve the roof act two. All in favor. She carries. Boiler pay act number three.
This is the boiler project at Clay City Elementary and this is their first time to be paid on that project. So they installed the two boilers and they're welcome to that.
I'll make a motion, roof pay act.
Second. Ms. Maran, all in favor. Motion carries. A table of league requests.
Want to walk in front when you're sitting in the back? We have the leagues that you've had a chance to review there. We have another baby coming. And we have, at this point, a motion to approve the two leagues.
I'll make a motion to approve the league request. All in favor. She carries.
So here's our league report, sorry, personnel action. You can see the maternity leave that we still have going on here. And you see our reservations where some are going to Parktown and a lot of coach shuffling going on in the offseason and that's difficult. We have a lot of pile of subs to try to meet that need. We have a district custodian to kind of help with a lot of different things that we've got going on with the transition and the new central office will be around the corner and helping with some after football and just cleaning up after some games to kind of relieve some custodians for the main job so they can do that better. Any questions about that personnel survey?
Other business.